January 26, 2021. My name is Marty Akins. I'm the chairman and vice chairman. Mr. Cabayus is with us. Members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin is with us, Mr. Himmel is with us, and that's it, five of us. Mr. Franco and Mr. Ray Dell are not here. Mike, can I, Cabayus, could I have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of January 12, please?
Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of January 12.
Second. On the motion, stand down, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. Under all business, we have ZBA case 2036, 68 Old Colony Ave. Is there anyone here for that case? Not to speak on it, to present the case. Because I know the building was just bought in a... So I don't know if anyone knows we're meeting tonight because it was bought on a... Hello, is there anyone there? Jonathan, do you see anyone that's 68 Old Colony Ave? Put a flag up, raise your hand, wave. You're on the phone? No? Alright, I mean-
Sorry, I don't see anything, but if they are there, they have the ability to unmute themselves.
Yep. Well, I think they're gonna, it's a new, I don't know what the new plans are gonna be with the new owner. So why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we move this to March 9, Mr. Cabayus, and then in the meantime, if they're gonna have a different set of plans, we'll just withdraw it next meeting and let them reapply.
Chairman, matter number 20-36, R.L. State Development LLC, Bavarian to demolish the existing structure and construct a new seven-unit residential building on the premises number 68 Old Colony Ave. I make a motion to adjourn hearing to March 9.
Second. On the motion, stand down and have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved, 5 to 0. 500 Washington Street. Now, I have, we have a letter here to extend this to March 9, but here's what I want to do. Gentlemen! Under Section 7, Enforcement of Zonings, Ordinance, Penalties, Jurisdiction of Superior Court, I want to read this. I'm gonna read this, it's a little bit I'm gonna have to read in here. So bear with me, everybody. It says under Section 7, "No action, suit of proceedings," shall be maintained in any court, nor any administrative, or any other action taken to recover a fine. Damages ought to compel the removal, alteration, or relocation of any structure or part of a structure or operation of a structure by reason of any violation of any zoning bylaw or ordinance except in accordance with the provisions of this Section 8 and Section 17, provide further that the real property has been improved or used in accordance with the terms of the original permit issued by the person duly authorized to issue such permits. No action, criminal or civil, the effect of the purpose for which to compel the abandonment, limitations, or modification of the use allowed by the said permit, or the removal, alterations, relocation of any structure erected in reliance upon said permit by the reason of any alleged violation or the provision of this chapter, or any ordinance or bylaw adopted thereafter shall be maintained unless sex action, suit of proceedings, is commenced in notice of therefore recorded in the registry of deeds of the county or district in which the land lies within six years next after the commencement of the alleged violation of law. Now, what that says is anything after six years can't go back on any permit that's been acted on. Well, that's what was acted on. So what I'm gonna do right now is ask for a motion, Mr. Cabayus, to dismiss this charge. It don't belong in this forum, and it probably don't belong in any forum since it's so old that permit was given. So with that, Mr. Cabayus and any board members, is there any question?
None for me.
Questions?
Nope.
No questions.
Questions?
The only question I have is, Chairman, what are we doing, voiding this? What's the actual thing I'm doing now? I'm making a motion to do what?
I'm gonna make a motion to dismiss the charge because it don't belong in this forum, and by that law, it don't belong in any forum or court or anything because it's been six years since that permit was given. So no one recorded it, put it in the deed that they have a problem, no one filed here within six years. So it's too old. So now we have to say that it's dismissed. Those are the laws, and it's in the wrong forum. If he wants to take him to court, do something, that's up to him. Try to get another venue. Is that better? I'm almost there. We're just trying to change these. So we're gonna make a motion to dismiss because it don't belong in this forum, Mr. Cabayus.
Right, Mr. Chairman. Matter number 20-57, Attorney Edmund Alcott, where a administrative appeal of the building inspector, Tokia Kott, that issued to the hearing. On the premises number 500 Washington Street, I make a motion to dismiss the action.
Second. Can I have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Ms. John Hart Akins?
Yes.
Mike Cabayus?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Hi, Durham?
Yes.
Okay, that passed. Further under tonight's agenda, all business, case number 2060, Robert Egan for Bavarian to construct a new home on the premises number 143 C.F. We're looking to move that to February 23. Mr. Cabayus, can I have a motion?
Chairman, matter number 20-60, Robert Egan for Bavarian to construct a new home on the premises number 143 C.F. I make a motion to adjourn hearing to, what did we say, February 23?
Yes.
Yes, February 23.
Second. Okay. You have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 5-0, okay. Passed. New business, TBA 2072, Eric Petit, for Bavarian to renovate and reconstruct the home on the premise number 125 C.F. C.F.?
You can go ahead and unmute them.
Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, we're here. Yeah, we're here.
Mr. Cabayus, could you please swear them in when we get them on the, I don't know where they are right now. Are you here? Are you on the phone, or are you on video?
No, we're on video.
There you are. Mr. Cabayus, if you could swear them in, please?
Sure. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truths, I'll help you, God.
I do.
Is that both of you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You have, you have the floor, Petit. If you could please explain exactly what you want to do here.
Well, basically, we're, what we're doing is like keeping everything existing. We're using the existing foundation, and what we want to do is put a wraparound porch to the right, obviously connecting to the back of our house. There's an easement that goes to the right of us, Quincy easement, and we will be three feet off of the easement with the wraparound porch. The wraparound porch will not have a foundation or anything. The deck will be above it and underneath it. So basically, open, which will not block anyone's view. So basically, we're just asking to go within the three feet. Obviously, there's, you know, there's a 15-foot space there, and I think, you know, the line is like on the other fence next to me, whatever, which runs like 14 feet. We're not going on the easement, we're just asking to go within three feet of it. There is, there also is an existing driveway at the top, always, obviously through the years, that is, is existing, that runs like two and a half feet from the easement, which we will be removing that for, for space and for yardage for our house.
Oh, nice.
But I mean, you know, we love the neighborhood, and, you know, we're so excited for this project, and, you know, and that's, so that's what we're doing.
I see. It's a beautiful home. I live right around the corner from there, back from here.
Thank you.
Gorgeous place. And I see that you're gonna have that wraparound porch that's going all the way around. Was that like a 34-foot deck you got out back?
Yep.
Yep. And then it's coming down. Now, one plan I could've swore said nine feet, one said eight feet, if I read the dimensions.
You mean from the, from the right side?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's nine, I think it's nine feet, I want to say. But it's, it's three feet from the easement.
No, I know, just seeing the deck we have here when I was reading it, if I better.
Yep, yep.
Alright, beautiful. Let me see if there's any questions on the board. Mr. Cabayus, any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. Chin?
How wide is that deck?
Nine feet.
Nine feet on the right side, because 32 feet by like 14 in the back, 16 by 32 foot. There's a big deck in his yard. It's beautiful.
Correct.
Beautiful, beautiful.
I see it. So the, you're looking for nine feet, but you're only going to be three plus feet from the easement line, is that right? Okay, no other questions?
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, any questions?
The question, I have, you said that there's an existing, the driveway exists there now?
Is it? Sorry, there, sorry, there's a, there's a two-car garage to the right of it. Somehow over the years, they built a, a small, single drive space. We're gonna remove it.
By remove it, you mean you're taking up the asphalt?
Taking up the asphalt and doing-
Cleaning grass.
Cleaning grass.
Okay, because you can't, you can't block it, right? You're not gonna block it?
No, no. We're gonna still leave the, the walkway there and the easement. Correct.
Okay, alright. And they, it's just, it's, it's a walkway to get to the water from C.A., correct?
Correct.
The city owns that walkway.
Correct.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know anyone that's ever used that, have they?
No.
No. I know when I bought my house at the time, I was looking at all those. I don't think they've ever used them.
No, but I'll keep it up. I'll mow, I'll mow the grass, you know.
Hey, might use. Is there anyone else with any questions? Mr. Himmel?
No, I think it's a nice idea. Take up the driveway, put the deck around, looks nice.
Thank you.
Mr. Chin?
Well, I was a little concerned about the nine feet, but where he's coming off of an easement on that side versus a neighbor's yard.
Right.
I can, I think, live with the nine feet because it goes with the rest of the plan, and it does look like a good plan.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. McCarthy, is the councilor on board here? I believe he should be here. Yeah, you go, Mr. McCarthy. Counselor, you want to say a few words before we, you want to hold off?
Um, no, I'll say a few. I, I was up there. First of all, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board, for letting me speak. I was up there a week, two ago, on 143 C and met Eric and, and took the tour of the old Hallet House that's up there. He's doing a tremendous job on the house itself. It's gonna increase the value of the homes up there and just be another, another showplace really on C.A. A magnificent view, the deck. We spoke about, I mean, a magnificent view and a magnificent deck. It's not gonna block anybody's view. We talked a little bit about the, the right-of-way, and I know those right-of-ways, Brinkley C.A. I grew up next to one, down at 29 C.A., and, and that right-of-way was always open, always available, but maintained beautifully. One thing Eric and I spoke about is just making sure that, you know, he remembers. Folks need to come down there if they do. The stairs are, some work at some point, which I'm gonna take a look at it and do a little due diligence in regards to that, but-
You're gonna repair those for us?
What's that?
You're gonna, you're gonna repair them yourself?
Well, it's a, it, it won't be me personally. Marty, you'd be the last one to go down, and that would be it, right?
Yeah.
But it, it, it's gonna, it's gonna really spruce up the neighborhood, and, you know, it, you know, that, that right-of-way, a lot of people maintain them in, in Hausneck and other places and, and keep them real nice, and I think it's gonna be a big plus up there. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone who wants to speak in favor?
I think we have, Lois Murphy is at her hand.
Yeah, Lois, you have the floor.
Go ahead, unmute us.
Mr. Cabayus, could you please swear her in?
I will once you unmute yourself.
Oh. Alright, let's go to Mr. LaRoche. Brian, swear him in, please. Brian?
I'm here now.
Hello?
Lois, give us one second.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Okay. Lois, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truths, I'll help you, God?
Hold on, are you doing Lois or you doing Brian?
We're doing Brian right now.
Yes, I do.
Because Lois got lost.
Thank you, Brian. Alright, Brian, you're on.
I'm on. Okay, good. So, Brian LaRoche, 67 Mears Ave, lived just down the street. I also met the same day with the counselor and Eric at his house. We looked at what he was proposing, and I think what he's asking for is very reasonable. Historically, when you have these passageways that exist, which is kind of a unique thing to our area, we can kind of assume sort of the midpoint of that passageway as the property line between the two people. So long as he's not encroaching on it, I think that's a fair request and a request that the zoning board has done in the past. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. Could you unmute yourself, and then Jonathan, you could tie her in, please, and we'll have her sworn in. Lois, are you there?
Should be good to unmute yourself now.
Can you see me, Marty?
No.
No, but we can hear you.
Well, if you can hear me, that's good enough, right?
Okay, I have to swear you in first.
I'll give you one else.
Hey, Ms. Murphy.
Okay.
Lois, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truths, I'll help you, God?
I do, sir.
Thank you.
Murphy, you have the floor. I want you-
Okay, I, I just want to say that I am the next-door neighbor. I'm delighted that these folks have bought the property. They're doing a wonderful job improving it. I'm so happy that they are going to be able to put the deck on their house and that the right-of-way will be open. I haven't been able to have stairs to the beach on my property in the last few years, and I'm happy to know that the right-of-way will be open and I can pass down it, and the deck will have no effect on the right-of-way at all. I'm very happy for them, and I approve their request.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Is there anyone else like speaking favor? Anyone else? Second call? Third call?
Not seeing any.
Call-up party, hearing close. I have a letter here from the D.P. W., January 11, 2021. One second. Clean is right here. I can't hear them. I can't hear. I just closed that, Jake, because I couldn't hear when she was talking.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 no big deal. January 11, 2021, 125 C.A., case number ZBA 2072, reviewed the Abbot reference project. I have no comment. Is there anyone opposing or undecided? Anyone who wants to speak, opposing or undecided? First call? Second call?
Not seeing any here.
Third call, I got a letter here. January 26, 2021. It's the City Hall, the Board of Appeals, the Quinney Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm the owner of 122 C.A., and I oppose the request granted for Bavarian 125 C.A., where the applicant seeks to build decks within four feet of the property line. As certified abbot, I never received notice to the hearing for this meeting. I also know one other neighbor did not receive a notice. There are 28 properties listed on the abbot's list, did not receive notice of this hearing. I heard about this, and before I read the rest of this, I will say that I looked, and we have a list that went out in the mail to every abbot within 300 feet plus. So I know they went out. In the owner's description of the proposed work, they state, "Four of the house on C.A. within 300 feet of the proposed project lot are four feet, six inches away from the sideline property line." My property is one of the four. They failed to mention, "My house was built in 1880, long before zoning laws were put into place, or altered many ways. I suspect the other properties mentioned were built in 1880 as well. The owner should not be comparing the lotline Bavarian structures that were built. Any riskers on the board where to grant the Bavarian, they would be reducing the amount of open space on the lot, encouraging on the right-of-way that abot's of the property lines that new preferences, dimensional Bavarian's for all property owners in the city of Quinney take advantage of. I hope the decision will be to deny the Bavarian and the project to landowners from overcrowding and overdevelopment. Sincerely, Diane Womack, 2021." Seeing nothing, nothing on the, on the polls, I will call that party hearing close. So I think it's a beautiful project. I can only imagine someone's gonna put a half a million dollars in a beautiful home.
More than that.
Just the renovations.
Marty, I think Kevin McKinnon wants to speak.
Just the renovations. Well, I asked him if he wanted to speak both times. No one answered. Kevin, you there?
He's muted.
Kevin, unmute. Kevin, unmute. Unmute you.
Yep, can you hear me, Marty?
Yeah, I hear you now. Alright, go back. Kevin, go ahead.
Marty, real quick, I was the other person that didn't receive a notification on that, just to confirm that. So I didn't have a chance to review plans and everything on it, but I did have a concern. I don't know if it's something that the zoning board can, can institute on something like this. When we talk about what somebody else has in the neighborhood, the zoning laws were, were put in effect because they saw that neighborhoods were getting overcrowded, that, that lots were being overbuilt. So it shouldn't matter what somebody else has. I'd love to have a, a small garage on my lot, but it would be right on the property line, and even though other people in the neighborhood have those, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the zoning board codes, so I haven't asked for it. But if I understand correctly, there's no foundation underneath the deck.
Correct.
My concern with it would be that these owners want to put up this deck, and it's not restricting views, it's not restricting anything like that, but are we extending the, the, the frame of the house as far as-
No.
-future goes where, hang on, where, where somebody then can, a lot of the, a lot of the decks in Hausneck have been turned into part of the house, have been closed off and, and stuff. So what's to keep them from then pushing it up, putting roofs on, continuing up to the second floor? Are we expanding the, the lines of the house, or can it only be a deck?
No, it can only be a deck because there's no foundation. If they, if we approved the foundation to go out there and fill that in, then that's how they do that. Then they move it up, they move it up a floor, then they move it up two floors. Yeah, but no, there's no foundation there. They're on their footprint. They're just moving the deck out there.
So they can't build any else on it, but it's just an open deck?
Correct.
No foundation, and anything beyond that, they'd have to come back in front of the zoning board?
Correct. They want to move feet, whatever they want.
Alright, and then just quickly to answer your question, I used that easement since the time I was born, and we, we always went up and down there to go to the beach. It was maintained by the city.
Yeah.
And when the city stopped maintaining the stairs, that's when that easement to the beach stopped being used. So while Counsel McCarthy is on here, if you can come up with a little bit of cash and get the city back down there to maintain the stairs and to clean that up and make it safe, I'm sure that a lot of people on the Hill would like access back down to the beach through that easement. But it was being used until it got overgrown and the stairs got, got treacherous. So that's all I got. Thanks, Marty.
Thanks, Kevin. I was up there, I don't know, I've been there like 16, 17 years, and I've never seen anyone use those because the stairs were wrecked for 20 years.
Right, and like I said, that was, it was, the city maintained those stairs. They weren't maintained privately, and, and it was all the way down. They had a set of stairs on the top of the seawall that they then put in in the spring to get all the way to the beach. So just a point of affirmation. Thank you.
That would be nice. I'd like to even take a walk down the beach that way with the grandkids and stuff.
Well, Dave knows how much we'd like to see that, so it gives them something to do.
Can you see that right there?
I, I can-
Here's yours. It was mailed here, and it was-
Yes, I did, I did get that list. I was just letting you know that we didn't, we didn't receive it.
I know.
As I said, I don't doubt that it was sent out, and I, except with the mail, yeah.
Trying to say, all these did go out where they went. I don't know, they didn't, they got into the mailman's box, and maybe we'll find him 10 years from now in his house in the garage.
Probably 92 C.A., because like I said, I get a lot of mail at Mears Ave for 92 C.A., so thank you.
What is, that's what?
Thanks.
No, that's-
This is Mears Ave.
This is Mears Ave. Alright, Kevin, thank you. David, second time, Counselor?
Yeah, real quick, I'm gonna look at that, that stair question in regards to the city, the obligation, et cetera. I, because I looked down there, and I don't want anybody trying to go down those stairs. I don't think they're very healthy at the very end. You know, I think it's a, you have to jump to the beach. I don't want to see Lois doing that, you know? I'm gonna look at it, I'm, I'm gonna look at it. Thanks.
We'll get, we'll get her a slide.
She could do it, though. She could do it. I have no doubt.
Better than any of us could.
Thank you very much. Alright, celebrations. I, I, I really love the house. I think it's beautiful. Like, like I said, which I don't think you heard me, one and a half million just in renovations.
More.
Oh, boy, he says more.
Hey, tell him, tell him, tell me the name of that contract. I don't want much.
It's, it's my brother.
Oh, boy.
It's a thousand, so just give me the benefit.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Alright, I, 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 I think it's a beautiful, beautiful project. I really do. It's, it's good for the neighborhood. I'll be voting for it.
Yeah, I'll be voting in favor too. It's, it's gonna be nice.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yep, Mike White.
Thank you.
Mr. Chin?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Himmel?
In favor. Nice, nice project.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion, please, Mr. Cabayus?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Matter number 20-72, Eric Petit, for Bavarian to renovate and reconstruct a home on the premises number 125 C.A. I make a motion to grant Bavarian.
Second. Second. Can I have a voice vote, Madam Clerk?
Hart Akins?
Yes.
Mike Cabayus?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
You know what's funny? I got, I got an ad for December 12th to the 19th or something the other day from Bass Pro Shop in my mail. So it was a month late, month and a half late. I'm saying, who did that? So anyway, alright, further under tonight's business. Case number ZBA 2087, Joe and Jesse Callahan for Bavarian-
We'll get it, right?
-to permit flood plan and remove the second story, reconstruct it in full night story on the premise number 67 Edgewater Drive. Mr. LaRoche, are you doing that?
Yep.
Yep, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm representing the, uh, applicants, uh, Joe and Jesse Callahan.
You have the floor.
Okay, can I, uh, share a screen?
Yes, please.
Yes, you should be also.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, sixty-seven Edgewater Drive is right at the intersection of, uh, Turner Street and Edgewater. Uh, this is the property here, uh, what we're looking to do is to take the second floor and, um, fill it out, uh, so it lines up with the first floor. Uh, and make it a full, uh, second floor, uh, right now, this is, uh, the height of the wall is about, uh, five and a half feet.
I don't wanna get into it, I don't know how I could.
Yeah, it's very, this is.
Whoa, whoa, oh, someone mute. Someone mute, no talking. Go ahead.
Sure. Uh, so this just gives you the orientation of where the house is, so we'll, we're just, all the work is on the second floor, we're gonna keep the first floor as it is and the basement. Uh, in the ni- in nineteen nineties, uh, the house was elevated, uh, to get it above floodplain. So it already, uh, the first floor and the basement are already floodproofed. Um, so we are in a floodplain here, but, uh, we don't have to talk about getting a variance for that, because it, it's already been done.
Right.
Um, so let me show you the, uh, the plans, just to give you another view, this is the survey of the property. Again, we're not, uh, we're staying on the existing footprint, all of our work, uh, for the house, uh, the one thing we'll do uh, on the side yard here, well, it's actually considered two front yards, is the existing deck, we're gonna extend. Um, and we'd like to make it a little bit bigger, uh, so that it'll be a usable space for them, uh.
Is that going right up to the corner?
No, I held it back, I'll show you again, I kept it back, so that, because of the corner, you know, with the views around the corner, I didn't wanna come too close, uh, to that, so we're holding back fifteen feet from Edgewater, uh, and we're just doing a, an extension of, right now, it is eleven foot two from the Turner Street. So we're just keeping that.
Alright.
The, um, the easy view to see here, this is a comparison between the, uh, the front of the existing, and then this is the proposed. So everything, uh, down at this level here is gonna stay as it is, the first floor, and we're just gonna be making the second floor, uh, a regular height, um, you know, eight-foot ceilings. Uh, we're cutting out the corner here to do a covered porch, uh, so we can take advantage of the views of Raccoon Island. Uh, and then, because of the floodplain, um, we need to give them a proper attic so that they have a place to store. The house is pretty small, uh, it exists right now thirteen, uh, sixty-three, uh, we're only gonna be adding, uh, uh, two hundred and eighty square feet. Uh, so they really, uh, it's pretty small, uh, house, uh, they, we, we're fitting three bedrooms in on the second floor. Uh, we really need a little bit of attic space, so we are gonna go to the full thirty-five feet, uh, to the ridge. Um, but the, the site is basically flat, um, so we will stay within the maximum. Um, so it's a fairly straightforward, uh, so, um.
That's important, no, are you gonna put a door there to go out there for three feet, or is that just a straight line, so? Is, is there a fence, you got a deck on that second piece?
Uh, the second floor, so the ceiling is, is here, so it's about an eight-foot ceiling, and then there's a railing, uh, that runs across here.
Alright, that's.
So it's, what you're seeing is, it's like a wire, a thin wire railing, and so it looks like clavering, but yeah, it's an eight-foot ceiling for that covered deck, it's about an eight-foot by eight-foot space.
And where's the door on the side over here?
Yeah, you're not seeing, well, so I'll show you the other si- the side view here, if you're on Turner Street looking at the house, here's the existing, here's the proposed, so it's a, uh, slider.
Yep, okay, good.
Okay, um, so it's fairly straightforward, so really, we're extending an existing non-conformity, the second floor, because of the height of the walls, already counts as as a, another story, so we're just extending that, so, um, uh, Jay Duka was telling me, uh, that we should be asking for a finding to extend an existing non-conformity. Uh, so we will, right now, because of, uh, the, the basement counts as a story, so that's one. First floor, second floor will be three full stories.
Right, correct. Now, we're just, uh, I wanna start this meet right now, cause I made a mistake when we started this meeting. And I want everyone to take a moment, uh, Chairman of this board, a member of the board for a while, and is in front of us a lot, passed away this weekend, Sunday, Steve DeSroche. And if I could please take a moment, everybody, just to think of him in our memory, uh, he was a great guy, I really liked him. It's a shame what happened, and it was COVID related, and if we could, please, just take a moment, and we'll be, we'll be right back. God bless you, brother. Homeback, is there anyone, thank you, everybody, is there, uh? Uh, yeah. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor, speak in favor on this project? First call? Second call? Third call closed, do I have anything for the DPW? I have a letter here from the DPW, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, sixty-seven, Edgewater Drive, case number Z B A twenty eighty-seven, reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone, opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call, closed. I'll be voting in favor, it's a beautiful project, uh, I have the whole applicant, they're very nice people, and, uh, they could use the room with the kids, so. Beautiful project, right now, right, right on Edgewater Drive, could not have a better piece of property, lucky. Uh, I'll be voting in favor.
Yeah, I'll be voting in favor also.
Me too.
I'll be voting in favor as well.
I think the requests are reasonable, I'm in favor.
Alright, is, uh, the counselor still here, did he, did he leave? There he is, Counselor, I'm sorry, give you a few remarks, I know you're invested in this project.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman and Board, um, Brian does great work, he's working his way right along Edgewater Drive, I think, house by house down there. But, uh, Joe and Jess lived on Casco for a while, they're, they're good people, the family's growing. And, uh, I'm glad they, they, they stick around, I mean, homes are going real quick in Quincy still, and, uh, great to have them, and, uh, great to help them out down there, and, uh, again, great work by Brian, and they'll have a, a beautiful home down there for, for years to come, so. Thank you, and thank you, Board.
Thank you, we have a voice vote, please?
Martin Agan?
Yes.
Michael Vayet?
I didn't make a motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike. After that Steve thing, you got kind of.
Kinda critical.
Voice, matter number twenty dash eight seven, Joseph, uh, Jessica Callahan, for a variance special permit, four points, move the second story and reconstruct it as a full height story, the premise number fifty-seven, Edgewater Drive, make a motion to grant the.
Second.
On the motion, can we have a voice vote, please?
Martin Agan?
Yes, again.
Michael Vayet?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Oh, yeah.
Russell Chen?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a motion to, uh, close the meeting, Mr. Cavares, please?
Just here, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you very much, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Stay safe.
Thank you.